Let's start the meeting. Henderson City Council Meeting, Wednesday, October 18th, 2023 is called to order. First order of business are the minutes of the September 27th, 2023 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I will move to accept those minutes. And seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried. We have requests to be, to appear before the council. We have Chad Adams from the Southwest Housing Initiative and Tim Needy's local celebrity.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, we are here to follow up from the meeting I was here at three weeks ago on the Workforce Housing Development Program. At that point in time, I think I indicated that the program should come available in March or the latter part of October or early November. Still have that first officially announced yet, but fully expected to see so. And then the application deadline for the program will likely after the first of the year. So if Henderson were interested in pursuing to get the grant for some workforce housing with Tim here as a developer, we're ready to help out and do some grant work. So Tim and I have generally kind of talked about that process, but I'm here to answer any questions and Tim, anyone?
Yeah, so I was contacted by either Keith or Lon after he had talked to you guys at that meeting. So we set up a meeting, met over lunch and talked about what the program is about and how to kind of link the points and stuff like that. So we kind of got ready to move along. Pretty low hanging fruit out there at 704 because you guys have already stuffed this sort of water in the street projects. We could use some of that as dollars for us as the city's portion because you're going to have $1 for the city for every $2 that you apply for. So with the low hanging fruit, we're ready to move forward with that project. It wasn't on my timelines, but if the grant comes through, I would, I'd build it.
Does anybody have any questions?
What's 704? Can you tell me exactly where that is?
Is this the location we're putting it?
Yes, 704 is right next to the church up there. 704 Metro Street, right where construction starts.
So this is going to be some Section 8 stuff, yeah, is it?
No, it's, it's workforce housing.
So like how many units are you planning?
Uh, we're moving garages to the back and then we're putting four units up there.
Okay.
And will all four units have garages?
What's that?
Or will they have, will the?
Will it be garages or street funding?
Uh, so we're going to kind of create an alley, so there will not be nothing off the street. You won't come off Minnesota Street. You'll have to come off of, I don't know. So.
Okay.
As far as garages, this plan is for water bill. It's the same plan that we're doing down there, but there we didn't have room for garages. Here I am putting 18 foot garages off the back of them. They're townhouse styles. I would be more open to take a look at.
So four units with 18 foot garage?
Yep.
Four 18 foot garages. Yep. Yeah, okay.
Okay, now this, this is, this has all been developed out of our, out of our visioning that we sponsored last October and where one of the, one of the prime requests from participating citizens was housing needs. And Chad gave the presentation on workforce housing at the last meeting. And it, yeah, it is not Section 8 housing. In fact, it's, it's pretty classy.
So are these materials? Are these units that people buy or rent?
Rent.
Rent. That's right for the first year, it's a rent, it's rental?
It depends if you could get a grant or loan.
Okay.
At least one year, at least three years. But typically it's probably designed just for rental housing.
Okay. And the city would be the owner of this?
No. Tim would be the owner.
Okay.
They were the participant and.
We apply for the grant?
Correct, yes. Yep, the city has to apply.
Okay, okay. And there's, but there's no cost to the city?
Well, $1 for every?
Well, that part, I mean, is kind of already taken care of. We're probably requesting free building permits and whack and sack as well.
So we can.
Like it's kind of.
As our participation.
Oh, okay.
And Chad, I would propose to be the grant writer because that's what he does. And he does it pretty well.
Yeah, I've been successful with it in the past and there'd be a fee for service for that that either the city or another party would, would pay for. But I'd mentioned at the last meeting that there's also a League of Minnesota Cities grant that will help you fund to hire the grant writers for his program. So you can get some of that paid for. So that would be one cost to the city, the grant writing services and then the matching contribution funds, which will quantify through what Tim has already discussed with the city.
Okay. But in terms of like, there's no like taxpayer burden to fund this? There's no significant taxpayer burden to fund this?
No significant.
Yeah.
Probably some, some.
So what is the exact cost to the city for this? I mean, just putting it bluntly here. What's up besides whack and sack and?
Well, the grant writer, I don't know what that fee is. And the grant writing services will be under $8,500 for this project. Tim and I have also been discussing some of our services and it sounds like he's going to be providing a fair amount of those, so that's why I say it's going to be under $8,500. That's been our typical fee for three of the cities that we've contracted with. But in those situations, we're also doing the project design. In this situation, we're not. So we're basically just helping you complete the application and submit it. And then at that point in time, our work is, is done.
And the grant through the League of Minnesota Cities for your services would be applying for by us?
Yes. Provide up to, I believe, a 50% of grant writing expenses. And if any city under 2,500 population pre-war, well, I would highly prefer to get that grant on all the city officials who looked at it and do it at all.
And we have critical need for rental housing.
Mm-hmm.
And it's going to be about a $600,000 to $700,000 dollar bill. So as far as recouping your money from that through taxes, I would say would be done in within a couple of years.
Okay. All right, that's a good point too. Okay.
I will note that as every other city that we're working with is putting a substantial like tax payment or TIF or fees or other reductions. I think Tim's request is not including that, so that's an additional benefit to Henderson the way I understand it.
And do you already own the land up there?
Yes. I own the house and, yep, I own the land. I've already had it surveyed and I've already talked to the county about splitting off the house. I, I have a very small mortgage on the house. I called today and the mortgage was sold through Wells Fargo with a Cooper. And I just said, give me the payoff amount. So because it, it was actually a pretty big ordeal to move the property lines if there's a mortgage on it because they have to accept the new square feet of property. So I actually paid it off today. So we don't really have to worry about it. So there's going to be no, no trouble with that. Yeah, we, we meet the requirements for, I've already talked to the county. We meet the requirements for the building for the square footage for the lot. Yep, it's like, it's just short of three lots up there.
Okay. Can I ask how big are the rental units?
Yeah, they're.
Two bedroom, one bedroom?
They're all three bedroom, one and a half baths and just shy of 1,250 square feet. 36 by 18, two stories.
Nice size, okay.
The main floor is 100%. I'm here.
That's okay. Yeah, me too.
Hey, man. This is the upstairs. These are the downstairs.
So they're two level, like your little townhouse?
Exactly, side by side townhouses. They could be PID now someday to be told.
Do you have a rough estimate on what you think rent would be?
Uh, somewhere between 12 and 14.
Okay. Because I noticed Jordan just opened something.
Yeah.
And their rent, I think, was nine something up to like 2,500.
Twenty, uh, the lowest.
To three, wasn't it?
I just saw that the lowest was just shy of 2,800. I think the minimum was like 1,800.
They were kind of a wow.
Yeah, it was a fresh shock to Jordan.
These are based on the three, three bedroom. I mean, that's.
That's nice size.
Yeah, that's.
Generally, yeah. Is that, is that the kind of rental housing we're in need of? I know we have a lot of seniors and we're looking for that one.
We're still working on senior housing.
Still working on seniors. This is the whole, this is literally.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Tim, do you, can I ask, do you live up there? Do you live?
I just live right outside. I used to live there.
Okay.
I lived there for six or seven years.
Okay.
I do have a project that is going to be coming after this one that will have five senior.
Okay.
It's, it's going to be a lot more dollars and I'm not ready.
Yeah, okay. But your plan, that's in your, in your mind planning?
Yeah, I already own the property.
Okay. For here in Henderson?
Yeah.
Crystal, Tim is relatively legitimate.
That's not what I'm asking!
I love the secret of this.
No, that's.
He's the only person that'll read me in a general election. He's a former mayor of Henderson, so.
Cool, awesome. Well, nice to meet you. Keith's making you blush and me blush at the same time. I didn't mean to undermine or question your legitimacy at all.
I'm pretty glad I'm looking for good teachers.
Okay, cool.
So I think we got to go forward.
I do too. I like the idea.
I have no problem with it, but I hope that the sites are kept up a little better than some of the stuff you got.
No, I don't. You can pass here if we're, we're working on it.
Because I hear it all the time. So that's what comes in the business. Right, but because I might ask you to, that's not be that way.
Well, and Tim, will you contact League of Minnesota Cities about that grant? Okay?
Well, I'm going to make a motion to.
Accept and move forward.
To.
Get the grant.
Get the grant and move this project forward.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried.
Because the housing is the only thing we're going to gain any day because we have no industry here, you know?
Yeah, it's kind of an unusable lot unless I do this. It, the lot's too big for rental. It, for one rental, it just, it's a lot of yard to know. And then they don't, so we're turning into building bigger units and having management.
So the other houses, you're moving that or you're prepared that it's going to stay?
Uh, the garage, the house is staying. The garage is going to go behind it. Okay, so it's going to be facing the east. And then those will all be built. So we're kind of creating an alley back there per se that would service all five units.
All right.
I own, I own to the trees, like right in the center of those trees is what I own to.
Did you get anything else?
No, I'll send over a contract probably in the next, next day. And I'll share that with Tim as well, too, so it's all transparent and we have responsibilities, fees, all that, so yeah, they're pretty good.
And should be no reason until, until you, until you say the application is funded, she should be, we should be done, right? And you should be able, you and Tim should be able to move forward and work with Tim to get whatever.
Yeah, I'll work with the staff here just to give you general information for the application, some of the feedback around the community and some numbers and metrics and stuff, but yeah, that's not too bad.
Good, well, I hope it, it's, I hope this leads to, you know, maybe some more projects working with you all.
Sure.
Housing needs, Matt. Awesome.
So utility wise, it'll be a separate water bill for each year of each unit?
Yeah, there's, there's stuff with certain water in there.
I need the water coming in.
And that's, but that's, and that's what he's saying, two parts of the match is whatever. Basically, Chris will come up with a mon, amount as to what it is per service and then we'll take our, our water and sort of fees and whatever and add that on, multiply the four or whatever and whatever the street parts of it all. So that, so when you're saying, when they're saying that the cost of city anything, it's, it's, just whatever that value is, is going to be the city's match. And so you're not going to build until next year.
All right, there's going to be a timeline on that.
So so excavators are up there.
What's that?
The excavators are.
I think it's.
But, but the point, and I don't know, which we haven't, I don't know if we figured out to it, but it's better to, you would waive some of those fees in the past, now next year it goes back on. I, I think for your purposes, you want everything on, right? Because then, because basically you want the fees charged and then once the fees are waived, then, then the city matches that. If it's four units, $27,000 cost a building permit fee. You know, so, so when you, when you say, you know, how much does it cost the city? Yeah, out of a hot, not very much, but you're going to be able to come up with a pretty big, you're going to be able to come up with a pretty big match number for what's, for what's more hard.
Right, it's absorbed in other.
Right. And we'll estimate or quantify that number, bring that back and have the council approve a resolution so that can be submitted with the application.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, bids, bonds with resolution. Eighteen. Nice to see you guys.
You too.
Yeah. Show me the money, okay? I'll be posting money for you. That's going to cost a little bit, but over time it'll be fine. So in your packets, I've got a sale day report. How did it feel today? Um, here last month. And we kind of kicked this off with a pre-sale report and sort of our roadmap of how we're going to sell this on and what we need to do between then and now. And thanks, Monty, Tim and your folks for handling that public hearing on the 27th. Appreciate it. Did you get anybody to attend that at all? Any comments on that that you were going to add for the bid? No, not really, no. I just had one I went on earlier this week and, and nobody showed up, so. But we got all the bonding authority we need to issue this rather large bond issue. So we did get it rated with the state's guarantee behind it. We don't have your underlying rating, due to private non-rated. So the interest rate would have been quite a lot higher, non-rated bond. But we got a AAA standard and quarter rating because it qualified as a utility project. Even other streets needed to be dug up to get to the utilities, so we convinced everybody what do you need to, to, to do that. So that was, that was great. So it did sell a pre-guarantee. So if you can't make a bond payment, the state will make one for you, but they'll, they'll claw back and try to get you your money, bring money back. So it's not a freebie deal, but. So that helps the bond holders say, okay, that's, that's good. We, we know we're guaranteed the payment. So if you look at like the second or the first page from the cover sheet, you know, so we, it's for the 2023, 2024 street utility improvement project. Already talked about the AAA rating. So we received four bids up to 10 o'clock this morning. And so I talked to Tim and Lon after we got the bids around 10:20, 10:30 ish. We have a conference call and he's kind of talked about, you know, what, what we got. And so the lowest bidder was BOK Financial Securities out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin at a 4.51%. This is a 20-year bond, goes up pretty far with all the volatility out there in the market. I'm still, I'm really happy with the four bids. That's a big deal. And they were all really quality bids because, you know, the second bid was from Northland Securities out of Minneapolis at a 4.6. And then Fair out of Milwaukee at 4.6. Few basis points in between those, a real tight bidding there. And then Hilltop Securities out of Dallas, Texas at 4.67. So those last three were really tight bids and, and BOK Financial went in with Stiffle Nicholas at 4.51, was quite a bit cheaper. We almost hit the mark on this on the pre-sale. It's probably five basis points off, a little higher with our projections, but the market did move up, right? We're always seeing the interest rates are going up a little bit every day, it seems like. And so we, we caught it just, it's kind of an out event, I'll say. So after we, you know, redid the numbers and everything that are attached here, it's pretty much what you saw, you know, in the pre-sale report. So that's, that's nice to, nice to know. We hit the mark pretty well. And so, so we're going to keep it at 6,150,000. We did, there was some, we call production in the premium bidding here with, I think, all four of these, but BOK sort of gave us an extra $100,000, $105,000. It's basically probably within, between now and the pre-coming date of the bonds in 2033. So they're, they're sort of, they're customers on there and I gave them some, some extra money in order, you know, in between the two interest rates here, the re-offering yield and the actual coupon rate. So that's called production on there. And so it's, it's cash for you guys. And so Lon and Tim decided to keep the $105,000 because there's some, some extra costs coming in. And I've got it kind of here in the narrative notes, the watered sewer main related to Island 93 Ridge Row and Flood Mitigation portion of the project. And that's about coming in at a hundred grand more. So this was like a perfect storm, you know, so we got a little bit extra and didn't have to increase the bond issue at all. So yay for the market treating us kindly on that. So that's kind of the conversations that I have with staff after we get the bids is, you know, what to do and that kind of stuff and, and those types of conversations. So yeah, so we've got, you know, the summary of the, you know, bond issue. We've got the bid tabulation. BOK's the one you picked, I would imagine. We've got the final numbers behind there. And I know that you guys are already pre-leaving for the tax levy portion of this, so that's, that's great. And I think that landed pretty good, that Tim had talked about that after the meeting to make sure you got that in your budget for pay 24. So that's, that's all taken care of. And then the water rates are going to have to catch up, right? We're going to have to get going and have to pay the bond, pay the bond. And after that is, is sort of what the standard for credit rating looks like for that AAA guarantee, which is a pretty simple report back there. And then I've got the 30-year bond buyer index. So if you compare that graph with the one I came with last month, you'll see that it adjusted up a little bit. So there's nothing we can do about that, so. And then we're going to close on November 9th. So we're going to get all the money on November 9th. And I know our company's got it all tomorrow. Tim and Lon will see if they, if you guys want to invest with us. Take a look at, at that, see what the draw schedule looks like. I know it's probably going to be spent pretty fast, but, you know, some of them may sit around a little bit. We want to kind of hedge our interest rate, rate the investment rate and then this rate and try to kind of pull it out. So we'll be talking about that. And we've got to keep you, you know, over $5 million. So we want to make sure that you're taking care of what we call arbitrage over $5 million. We have to be careful not to invest higher than the yield of the bonds. I know it seems kind of like, like we, that's going to be difficult to do, but the investment rates are pretty high right now, so that's a definite possibility that that could happen. So we want to make sure that our folks, our arbitrage team keeps everybody out of harm's way when we do this. So it's nice to have the investment folks and then the arbitrage folks kind of talking together and making sure that we are investing this as high as we can without having to give anything back to the federal government. It's called rebate. And that's not bad either because that means we've made too much money on our borrowed money, so that's okay. It's just no fun to kind of give something back. It's just more paperwork if we can catch it early enough. And then, so those are the things that are attached and I think this was a great bond sale. Yeah, I think you were probably one of the only ones in Minnesota selling a bond today on Wednesday. Usually Mondays and Tuesdays are pretty, are pretty active, so, you know, we might have picked up a couple here, hungry broker dealers that were looking for something. And I think by Wednesday, they kind of shared with their pencils and they kind of knew what things were going to look like after they looked at Monday and Tuesday. So I think today was a great day to sell bonds as well. So what's in front of the council is a resolution that puts all this conversation into words and then some. So it, it awards the bond sale to BOK Financial Securities out of Milwaukee. And then all of this sort of is dumped into the resolution, eventually the final one. And we're off to the races, signing up things electronically and by email and all that stuff for the November 9th closing. So it's, try to keep it simple and effortless for, for staff and the council. So I have to do is say yes to this if you, if you'd like what you see and, and we should be doing. So any questions from, from you folks? It's a big step and it's a lot of money, but some of you's got to do it.
Yes, sure. So I work at an investment firm and I'm affiliated with a broker. Can I still?
This, this particular one?
Not this broker, no.
You're okay.
Okay. Just making sure if someone wants to come back or not.
No, you're good. Absolutely good. Thanks for the question. Yeah. Anybody have any more discussion? All right, I'm going to get a motion. Resolution 2023-18. Motion made and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion being carried. Thanks for the business. Appreciate it. And we're going to be back with some financial planning and really great stuff. So you'll see me and the others in the future. And we're happy to keep kind of working with you folks. Don't want to, want to make sure that you're in the red, you know? So I've got a, a proposal form that I'm going to have to sign and clerk with Lon. We've locked in a couple seconds. The. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you. All right, next order of business is Representative Harder.
Well, thank you for allowing me to have a few minutes of your time. I appreciate that. So for those of you that are really listening online or sitting here, if you don't know who I am, so I live in Henderson Township and my husband and I, we grow plumbing sewers. And then I also serve two terms as civil county commissioner. And I appreciate working for all the people in the area. So I've been asked, how would you describe your first year as being state representative? And I would describe it as being challenging and somewhat at times chaotic. And I would say that would pertain towards the end of the session when we're working on 10, 12, 14 hour days. It was just overwhelming. And the results of all the bills that were passed, I have a summary with me, so you can all enjoy the bills that were passed that will someday in the future affect you and I. There were quite, there were quite a few. And generally, I think that we have a belief that government should be fiscally responsible with our hard earned dollars. However, this year it just seemed that there is an insatiable appetite this year for the state to spend, spend more, spend what we had in the surplus. And then to add more by adding on with new agencies, we have new programs, we have more employees. And it just seemed to be endless from time to. And it just seemed to be endless from time to time. But we are all lucky to get $260 back from our surplus. Right? Right? We're promised $2,000 and then that was drafted and we get $260. I have heard a lot on that. And with, with the legislation that passed, I mean, all these bills that pass, we're not going to feel that effect today. And it might not be January 1. In some cases, it's going to be maybe two years down the road. So I'll take, for example, paid family medical leave. This one does not begin until 2026. And this legislation is going to affect everyone. So if we have one employer or more, this, this is going to be a huge impact to a lot of our local businesses, which I have heard from. And it will hamper, some of our small communities to thrive, grow, they want to grow their business. I mean, they got to take all these items into consideration and it's hard to maintain our workforce. And it's not just local businesses, local units of government will feel the impact too, because we'll have to fulfill those obligations. And so some of the counties that I've talked to, they're thinking that it could potentially, they don't have it all figured out. I mean, but it could be a permanent, you know, increase to your levy, I mean, to cover those, those costs. So we'll just try to manage to look through all that. But during the session, I did receive from people in the area, just within our district, I received lots of emails and phone calls and people came to my office to voice their opinion. And when I went to other events, you know, they would stop and share their concerns and I appreciate all of that. And I just wanted to go through a few of the items that were on people's mind this past legislative session. So the one that probably rises to the top, that I got the most communication on was the very first bill that was introduced into the House and that was known as the PRO Act. And this bill allows abortion from conception up until the mother could be giving, delivering the baby and change her mind. And that could be terminated. And I think that was, was a hard one for a lot of people to say that that was okay. And then just in addition to that, another bill, if a baby does survive an abortion, it will only be given comfort care. And then again, it's really hard to understand the direction that the state is going. The second one that I did receive many phone calls on and emails has to do with the Second Amendment rights, right? So in our district, we have a lot of hunters and law-abiding citizens. And there were a number of bills that were brought up that wanted to be passed, but two of them did make it through. And the two that passed were the firearm background checks and the extreme risk protection orders. The other ones that didn't pass, I wouldn't be surprised if they come back next session. I mean, a lot of times the bills that are proposed, if they're passed, people will keep trying to get the bills passed. And then another one has to do with e-gaming. So a lot of our local charities do the e-gaming. They partner with our local businesses and, well, a lot of that was taken away. So basically whatever group, let's just say that they made $21,000, right? And all the money, like say Alliance Club or whoever in the area, we use that money locally. It helps students in robotics, playground equipment, scholarships, just a number of things that help our local areas. Let's just say that, that a group raises $21,000, just for an example. Well, they will, based upon the bill, they're probably making about a third of what they used to. So basically a lot of changes in terms of the bells and the whistles, you know, when you open up, I don't think gamble, but from what I've been told is that, that it's a lot of fun. And basically it's going to become boring is what a lot of people, is what people would describe it.
So Bobby, does that bill, two-thirds of that goes to the state if a third of it's only staying with whatever group is doing it? Or where does the other two-thirds go?
A lot of it was with the tribes. The tribes were the ones that were kind of pushing that, that they, they wanted control of all of it.
You're saying that the additional two-thirds of the funds raised by the Lions Club are going to a tribe?
I can give the exact information for where it's going to go. If it's going to go to the general fund or if it goes to some other resource, I can get that information for it. I have it in my handy book.
Some of this is just hard to believe that.
That it passed.
That it passed. And they're, do they understand small towns and how we operate on our fundraisers?
That's an interesting comment. Based upon what I observed in session, their representatives that are in the metro, we in greater Minnesota really don't count. They don't really want to know our lifestyle, our way of life. And we just don't count. I don't know how else to explain it.
Maybe we should invite them out so we can tell them.
I don't know how to explain it and to be nice about it. They, they really, we really don't matter to some of them, not all.
We're seeding them.
Some, not all, but some really do have, really do have that.
Yes.
And they, yeah.
Okay.
That's sad. It is. I mean, that's why I say that it was challenging. A lot of things have happened that were very challenging, that it going to affect people here in Henderson and our entire district. And can it be undone? Sure. It'll take a lot of work to do it. And sometimes it may not, because think about all the ordinances or whatever that pass and you try to change it. Once people get used to a certain way, it's hard to undo.
So like the example would be ETAPs where people are going to bars or whatever, playing ETAPs, two-thirds of that money is going somewhere else?
Yes. I can give you the, I'll send you the specifics where it's going to go.
For sure.
It's just, I'm curious. Yeah. But that one is not taking effect right away. That'll be a while. And then also many residents, we're not on board with allowing non-citizens to have the same rights and privileges that you have. And a couple of examples would be the driver's license. So we had a number of amendments that, let's say, driver's license, maybe they need to be a different color or in a different way. They need to say not for voting purposes. All those items were voted down. So non-citizens, their license will look no different than yours and mine. And then they will also be allowed to have access to Minnesota Care, which is my opinion is that the money that, that is used for Minnesota Care should be used for, for our people, our residents. And so it's going to be stretched for other areas. But there are some positive things that did happen. So one of them is we have some struggling nursing homes in our district. And so we passed 300 million to help those facilities. And those would be in the areas of Gaylord, Arlington and Winston. So they, they too struggle with meeting their monthly obligations, finding the workforce. So hopefully that will help them. And of course, that's important to people in our area to keep their loved ones within the community that they live. So that's important. And then there was also some state aid for police and fire departments. And so if I have, I checked, and so if I have the information correct, so for police aid, you get a little over 13,000. And for fire departments, you get over 16,000, I believe is what's coming towards Henderson. And then there are some guidelines as to what the funds would be used for. And I was told, I was informed that the Department of Government would be doing an audit as to how the funds are used. So just keep that in mind on those funds. And then there were several projects that were either fully or partially funded for areas in our district. And that would be Sibley County, that has to do with the County Road 6 project. The city of Gaylord received funds for the Lake Titulam Dam. The city of Carver, their levy is no longer certified, so they received funds, funds to redo that. And then the city of Watertown received funds for the Watertown. So that was great. And then I also want to extend a thank you to the Henderson Library. We have a very good library and they do apply for grants through the Arts and Heritage Fund. And so they put on programs that are beneficial to the people of Henderson and the area. And from time to time when they receive those funds, they send me a thank you and they tell me how they use the funds. And so I'm very appreciative of that. So that is my short update. So if you do have any questions about any of the bills or any of the, I will certainly get the information to you on whatever that it is. And again, I do appreciate working on behalf of the people in the area. And I hope and ask people that they would sign up for my updates that come out once in a while in the summertime, a week during session. And to please reach out and tell me what's most important to, to the people that live here so that I can work on behalf of the N filter station when things come up. I can say, hey, this is how to fix this area. So how do you sign up?
Bell's asking a question.
How do we sign up for the updates? You can either, you can give me your email or you can go to the House of Representatives page and you look up members and then you look for my name and then right next to my picture it would say subscribe to Minnesota Care.
I would ask, well, if the biggest deal we've got right now is water quality issues. We need to move forward on getting rid of the rustle. And we're not getting any real involvement by the feds. And if there's one thing you can do for us is to contact Congresswoman Fishlock and ask them to pay some attention to us.
I can do that. In fact, I have talked to her office about your issue. And I also reached out to House Research, what steps that you would need to do on that. I haven't heard back, but as soon as they get the information, I will send it to Tim.
Just a, we do have, we've got three grant, we have three funding applications. One that Fishlock's office wouldn't, they submitted, but got rejected or something. And we got, they're actively in the Senate and I don't know, Chris, you applied for over half a dozen. Do you know if those need program to go?
Yeah, we look at state programs to, for bonding bill or for drinking water revolving fund, that probably just works too well for drinking water revolving fund right now. So bonding bill would be the next, next best possible state fund.
There are many jurisdictions on there, Bobby, you know, so there you go. Because there's a few that need to be.
Yeah, yeah.
But yes, I'm well aware of the water quality in Henderson.
All right.
And so next session, something, something gets introduced in the Minnesota Bonding Bill to House and Senate, you would take that to Bobby and Glenn and all that works or?
Correct, yeah. So as you had, we were funding specialists who was up lobbying us and they, they would work through those, the representatives and the Senate, the legislature guys to try to try to get those into the Bonding Bill for 24. So that's something we would need to, yeah.
And is that, is that the one like in, I mean, is that part where in June or July, when you get emails or whatever, is that, is that where you sign up for that and put that application together or is that something separate?
I think the last one I did was in June for a different project. So if it's looking at the 26 bonding session, it'd be June of '25. There is still an opportunity to try to get it into the '24 session. It's a lot of work, but it could be, could be tried to push through if you want to try to get it into next year. And that's something I think we want to talk about.
What can you do, right? And you're willing to carry that, right?
Right, yeah. I'll carry whatever, whatever my district, what they want for their needs. So the bonding tours with the House and the Senate, they did come through our district and they, they toured the requests for New Germany, New Auburn, Gaylord has another request. Steve Carver has another request for their levy.
So do you think we're too late?
You're never too late. The thing is, according to the gal I know in the House, she said that there was an overabundance of requests for water and other projects. And I don't, this is not the exact number, but somewhere I've heard that there were like 8.5 billion, I think, in requests. And they didn't know what kind of a bill or the number. So never too late to put it in. Because if it doesn't, if it doesn't go through one year, then you're already in the hopper for the next, the next time. A lot of these jurisdictions that have, that have been in the process, like let's say, just say in Germany, they've been waiting for several years to get their project funded. They started working on their project in, I want to say like 2015 and they finally brought forth the bill in 2020, 2021. So they've been working at it and they've gone to the hearings to give their bill for the committee. And they've also had the bonding with the capital investment committee come to their area to take a look at that, what they're requesting to. So they've put a lot of work through that.
So Chris, as far as where you're at, with the filtration plant design or application, I mean, is it, is there, would there be a lot of, a lot of things you have to do to get it ready or basically it takes a one that we have, that you have to put together and just revise it somehow?
Yeah, so the last one, last request I did, I think it was through a paper worksheet that needs to be filled out. And it includes information on the other funding sources, because you can get a maximum 50% from the state Bonding Bill. So you had to have a match for remaining 50%. So $6 million water fund and $3 million from somewhere else. The congressional director's spending request that's in Tina Smith's office is for 80% of the $6 million cost. So if you're able to secure funding on a federal level, you use that match against the state level, which would be one thing that would really help you out a lot. But it's, it's a, it's a small worksheet that you do fill out, it can still be done. The tours, I presented a project and I think the city had the levy on the previous tour a couple years back. So you can kind of look at that process a little bit. But the tours are over with, but if we can get a champion in the legislature to push the project, I think there's still time to make a request. I can talk to David Krueger on our end.
So David, the last, Kristen did the last one. Is anybody doing this one or?
Yeah, David is now our representative for this part of the state for rest age, but Kristen could also assist, yes.
Yeah, so if you want to, we can start working on that. So we can get, you know, the information to the advisor so that we can get that introduced earlier into the session, earlier than that. And then you're possibly carrying and you're working on it. It's never too late.
Thank you.
So if they run today, they're expecting a huge overrun tax revenue, I would say.
Right, so every month this, this year, they've projected, they've gotten more in than what they projected. So yeah, call it a surplus, whatever you want to call it, it's going up there again. So there's, there's money out there.
Where does 17 million go?
We got $260 bucks.
We got $260. New agencies, you have cannabis, there's a new agency there. Origin Farms, you have, what is it, children, children, youth, families, there's new agencies. The paid family medical leave, they have a new agency. So quite a few.
That's a problem. The old government jobs, they don't produce anything. They don't produce any revenue. They take revenue.
They do.
Thanks, Mr. Trump.
Anytime. Thank you.
It's going to be a decision.
Oh, yeah, I get mad in there.
Whatever it is, like a person.
Yeah, it's gifting. What can I say? No, I can't go back.
So with you today, you have a pay application for the contract 2023, 2024 project. I don't know if that just goes straight into your financials at the end here or I was presenting the pay application. I think I shall have submitted it by, submitted it to Tim on Friday. So you do all that, burning here today, payment application for 2023, 2024 project.
You can do whatever you want and whatever you ask, huh?
Yeah, I'm just asking if that's.
Up to me.
It'll work.
So if there are questions for me on the pay application, the first thing, and if there are any questions, I'll just ask that council accept it. Street and Santray Sewer Water Main currently, along Peak Avenue North. They're going to continue working through that area with the pipe drilling contractor coming through on Friday. And the pipe drilling contractor is Westford Drilling. And they'll be fusing ten inch pipe for what's going to be drilled on Ninth Street. So the most of Santray Sewer Ninth Street is going to be directional drill, it's deep, and saves a lot of time for opening the road up. So there's, that's going to be going. They start drilling, they start fusing on Friday, I'll be worried for next week. So that means that they'll be getting up to that point of, it's still that Santray Sewer, it's about five to seven feet deeper than the old sewers, which means drill right below the old one, so those people won't lose service or anything during that work. Otherwise, I'm getting less phone calls. I don't know how council's feeling right now, but the water quality issue's still, still the most prominent. I have a sound like that's starting to lessen a little bit, or just less phone calls, I don't know, one or the other. But hopefully the water quality's starting to settle in a little bit now that everything's kind of a little.
It'll help to get the junk flushed out of the system, that's for sure.
Yeah, it sounds like a lot of it's maybe come from the south end of the property, and I say where the contractor is actively working. And that water main is proposed for replacements with the Highway 93 project. So our levy going into the creek, all that old cast iron pipe will be gone when that levy project happens. So with between the Latin 93 project and between this project here, you'll be left with all ductile and PVC pipe throughout town. So all the, that's probably gone, so.
That'll be good. It's cast iron and magnesium, it'll react good together.
Yeah, yeah, so you're getting rid of basically, everything that's been live for decades and decades and collecting and collecting is going to be gone. Not, not that you won't be still having iron in your system, at least the distribution system will be less of a cause of that. So when things get loosened up from flushing and all that, hopefully that starts to improve. But ultimately, a water filter plant's the only way to stop that from being a long-term issue. So as I mentioned, that is in the congressional direct spending request to Tina Smith right now, and it's still listed.
Is it practical for you to put something together to get the bottom?
Yeah, I would do it if David Krueger were doing it, and that's our, and I know you know David Klon, so. So with the, the reason why it's not in there now is the project scored a 10 points on the drinking water revolving fund. So we do a project priority list request in the spring, and then all the projects get points and then they get ranked. So the city ranks 477, 478 of two projects, one being the water distribution project, which you already underway with, and then the other being water treatment. So with 476 projects in front of you, you went to work very well. So if, from just a points system, or just a numerical system, the water quality is fine, so you don't rank poorly. So it's one of those things that you get better rank if you have bad water. So if you have a radon issue, if you had arsenic or something else, then you would be getting higher points. So we have a similar community, just Eastern Mankato, that ranked number eight because they've got radon. And otherwise, they have similar type of treatment system as you do. So having good, better, decent quality water with just a coloring issue is, is, it's not helping you. So you do need to have bonding bill, which is where you can kind of get someone who can run with the project, without necessarily looking at a.
If the bonding part isn't necessarily, if it's 488, that doesn't, it could still be introduced and used and whatever, so.
Yeah, so if somebody looks at it and doesn't know anything about City of Henderson, just see this 478 there, and they do anything about it, so doesn't mean to do a bigger push to get funding, than maybe some other comparable projects. So, but the same thing on the federal level, if you could get Representative Fishback to take on the project along with the senators, you'd be a lot better positioned than having just one of the two. That's, that's, the feedback we've had is that if you get both, you get a greater stand of a lot, much better chance. Because I know the senators did bring a lot of projects with them for requests. I think there was 19,000 projects that are on the, on that congressional spending request nationwide, so.
I think we'll just take them, some of our water to drink that day.
Jane, custody, no big concern.
Probably if you took our water there, you'd probably, you'd probably, probably be 500 in one and 15,000 in the other. I mean, it's, well, if it was, if it was that bad, nobody would ever drink it any other, any other day. I mean, just when the system is disrupted with the iron, I mean, it's hard to prove.
I was, I was going to win the Powerball, I really was, and I was like, I'm going to just buy that water filtration system.
No, that was my call.
That was my, I was going to do that, but it didn't happen.
We should all be buying Powerballs.
Yep.
So as far as, as far as the project, and my understanding, the contractor is doing everything pretty much, very typical for a project, you don't do anything unusual and that kind of things. It's just, most systems don't react so quickly and so negatively when you turn a valve or flush an iron. So hopefully that starts to resolve itself. And then as far as the work on the project, I mean, there's really, as far as the water main work goes, there's not a ton of water main on this project that's left to go. They do have the work on South Street, which will eliminate that. When they're working on the water main on South Street, they're going to have a two-block segment of old water main taken out of service while they're doing that work. So there might be another point where they have to backfeed from Ridge Road. So hopefully that's, they're, they're getting services, hopefully it's just a, what we process to put pipe in, get tested, and rent back in service. So I think they're, they're doing a pretty good job. They are a good contractor, so.
They're doing excellent, I think.
Yeah, they're, I asked for recommendations, I've, I've seen Dirk's name all over the place, and they've worked on a lot of our projects that are at Washington Office, that's where they're located. And that's a big pilot, and it was asked, yeah. Yeah. So I think they're, they'll get their, a little bit of it off, they can get things put back together before winter, and I think we'll get the chat.
They've got a couple crews working right now, right?
I think they have 10 people out there, maybe a two or two crews, maybe three, I'm not sure exactly. But as they start getting the utilities installed, they'll be back, or starting good streets put back together. They, they understand the time period it is right now too, as much as anybody else.
I guess they'll bring another excavator and stuff out there.
They might have brought in some of the forbidden streets too, maybe the wire bucket or something like that. But they've got the manpower, they're, I'm not, not too concerned about them being able to save it down, as long as we don't, you know, in two weeks and not, not thought about that though. And then just a general update on 93 project, I did talk to Luke Johnson regarding the permitting of 401, 404, and 408 permits. He checked it, Minda, they don't have any updates on it, so all three get submitted together. And so that's the, the last thing that they're, they're waiting for on there in the things, where they did send another reminder to the Corps to get that figured out. We did get comments back from Central Office, so we are making the last updates. The Central Office reviews the last review on the plan set. And so once those comments are addressed, then it's usually pretty close to bidding. So I think it's still looking at early December, if I recall correctly. And three years of construction, so once that does bid out, 23, 24 through 26, 93 will be closed down, so.
And the water part of it, when do you think that will be sequenced? Do you have an idea?
That's the question I have, and we can dictate that to the contractor, but my, my expectation is that they want to put that water in the ground before they add another 10 feet of fill on top of it. So, because they do have the surcharge, where they gotta add some material there, well, not as a surcharge, but just they're putting a ton of material down. So I would assume they'd want you in early in the process.
But you won't go until after, until after the contractor?
Contractor's got to revise schedule, and if they dig it out after putting that much material, or material nice and awesome back up, I don't think that's what they want to do. So I think they would want to put that in there in the period. And so that would be from the PRV station halfway down the road, all the way to the last bit of pipe that was installed, the previous 93 construction, that'd be all replaced. And then the new pipe going into the creek for the alignment. And I'm sure it's, it's got a little sump underneath that creek now, so that's probably a little collection point for rust and materials to settle in. So that would be abandoned, and then the new pipe will install. And that's going to be PVC pipe that's going down this project.
And so why, and so why, and why you say that? I mean, I think maybe everybody's kind of figured it out by now, and that's part of the whole thing that happened, whatever, 10 days ago, two weeks ago, for starters. Seems like it gets set. I mean, those people up at the Oakley Heights and Ridge Road area, they needed to get fed from down below, so we hadn't fed them down below for 20 years. And so in order for them to have water, got to fed from that bottom end, which wherever they were standing, they had no place to throw off. I mean, and, and, you know, wouldn't have done any good to do anything until after that was done, as far as flushing and maintenance, because the water wasn't running there, I mean, before it, so that part of the project, that's.
So hopefully things are settling down a little bit. So I think, I think the contractor's doing what they can, and they'll push forward, get that done and opened up so that by the time that 93 is closed, that there's other ways to get around. So if there are any more questions for me, I guess just the payment application's a big one for me. I guess it asks you to approve it.
Yeah, there's some similar one, so you have the money. You kept, you kept my threat, they're not going to get it, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, and then if there are any other questions for me, I think I went through what they're at currently. So we are continuing with our regular updates, hopefully that's helping out, getting the daily updates out there. And the weekly for anybody else that just gets the letters, so. Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Eric. Thanks for staying open. arrest, two domestics, two ordinance violations, one traffic citation, 47 traffic warnings, 31 directed patrol calls, and 13 policing calls. And then we had, for serious incidences, we had picked up some drug paraphernalia from MNCS. We had HRO tests in South Fifth Street. And we had citation for vibrator's education permit violation. And Dan Koski, our new officer, is cleared to go up to start working on the first November. He passed his background check and everything, so, and all of his testing is, so.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Jim, you're.
So tree grant on the previous one with the 12 trees, but pushing that back just a little bit, because I'm still trying to locate these trees and make sure that they're private versus public on that currently. I think Steve and I will go out later this week and take a look at the rest of those. We did get notification about the second forestry grant program. We were not funded for that this time around. Something like 7 million, 7 million in funds were available, and over 33 million was requested, so it didn't occur for us this time. It will open back up again early 2024, we can push again there. And I have not heard anything about the third round that I submitted at the same time the second one went in. Regarding the compost camera, it's up and running, everything looks good. Seeing a lot of construction equipment up there, and a bunch of deer right now, and that's pretty much about it. Eric does have a login for that, he's monitoring, we'll adjust that as we need.
They should point the arrow toward the field and not toward the home, right?
Yeah.
It's always there.
It's, it's right there. Let's see. I did reach out from last month, check other communities on the public safety aid. Basically, what it's being used for is, you know, one-time capital purchases, equipment, fire police, ambulance stuff. I did hear of one community for a little bit of payroll stuff for, for police department. Trying to get it.
That was what Bobby had mentioned, that 13 for police and 16, and we had discussed it, that's how it's different?
No, that's the standard, this will be the issue.
This, this is it, okay.
Yeah, the 13,000, we, we get there.
Oh, okay.
And, and the other actually was 20 for the fire. The fire was 16 standard and then another 4,000 that they got for something.
Gotcha.
So those two, the 16,000 goes directly into the police general fund, and the other 20,000, it's on here for, that, that goes to the Henderson fire relief.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
And then lastly, we have a resolution to designate polling place location for all elections in 2024 and forward. Typically, this is done once a year, but they've changed it now so that you can assign it one time, as long as there are no changes, we don't have to do this again. It's Resolution 2023-19 to designate this room as the polling place for the City of Henderson.
I'll make permission to approve, one second.
Motion made, seconded, on favor, signed by my Saint I.
All right.
Proposed, motion made, carried.
Okay. Levy stuff, another back on that inspection, counting the trail, folks covering on that one from, once that grant opens in December. Todd mentioned the FCPs and the auditing, whatever, it'll start that in December. Checklist will start that in this November, December, we talked about it a little bit at Employee Review. You heard the update for Chris on 93, it's still set for bid in January. County is checked set for bid in November, so either in November or December meeting, I'll have Kim and Minda grab that year. And financing staffing for next year will probably start advertising for next person in the area of December, somewhere in there, working to 2024.
Is that it?
Yep.
All right. Personnel?
Okay.
Got it? We've got with personnel, did their yearly reviews?
Not a whole lot to.
Not a whole lot to report?
I think that way it's going to set with three people in police. Jake is going to do 32, I think. Eric's going to be around 28 to 32, and then the new person will be 40. So that's, I think that's all. That'll be, that'll be.
All right.
Where does he live?
Right now, will be.
The new guy.
The new guy is renting a place from Fred.
Good luck.
Hold on.
Which are you reporting? Fred will know. No, I'm working here.
Kinda.
Or is he living in the, in the little lot?
No, that's.
Well, that's going to be an Airbnb, isn't it?
Well, I don't know, I think one of the small houses got, so, I don't know, I didn't see it when I went by the other night. But Fred's son is living in the house, and I think the new cop's going to rent a room for now, just to get down here. All right, school land, any real update there?
Yeah, I just saw that, I mean, they got to get it repaid, but they didn't make a printout. But they did, they hired their attorney, and they hired their realtor. But they did, they hired their attorney, and they hired their realtor and platter person, and they're gonna have that lot three, the one, the front one on South Street, that'll be planted as residential. They've got the other one that, where the city park stuff and whatever, we don't, they've got that planted, and then they've got the parking lot planted with the school. And then they got the fourth, their fourth one is where, to the north, that they're gonna, they're gonna turn that into residential. So I think now it's, it's just a matter of establishing four partial IDs, and then once that's done, negotiating with the city to.
They're just gonna create one partial ID for that.
One more.
No, no, but I mean, for the, for the residential, or they want to.
One partial ID there.
Yeah.
And then, I, I would guess how it's gonna work is, for Hilltop, that's gonna keep the original.
Right.
For Hilltop, for the school and the parking lot is, that's gonna keep the original ID. They're gonna create a new ID for, for the new residential. Then they're gonna create a new ID for the city track, for the park track. And then that other one already, we had already created an ID on that track.
The loop that connects?
No.
To Beverly, or is it Beverly?
No, no.
Is it this one that's on the other side of the ballpark?
The one by the ballpark, that, that one, we had already created.
Okay, oh, right, okay.
That one, that one won't need a new ID, but they're gonna take the other one and split it, take, take the one where the school property is right now and turn it into three different partial IDs. One that's gonna be for public use, one that's gonna be for Hilltop use, and the other's gonna be for residential.
Yeah, eventually the residential would have to be.
Yeah, that'll.
Go through another.
That'll, that'll go through the other development plan, right, to, to 12 or 14 or 16 units.
So what's actually going on with the school land?
Yeah, they've got the.
The children are probably not up there.
There's some people up there.
I don't know how many students are actually there right now. I hear 20, I think, this is what I saw.
Could be, I mean, I think the first day that, that.
200, you did all the reporting.
I think the first day that, that they were doing stuff with the roads, I think the ladies had, she had to notify 14 people. It's so, I don't know, if that means someone will come in by bus, and then someone else drive in, but, but it was, she's got a list of 14 people, she's got, she's got a contact as far as, so, we access to the building and stuff changing. From the construction program.
All right. Done?
Yep.
North Sixth Street stop signs. I, there's been a lot of discussion, and I've talked to quite a few people. It's really confusing down there. And I'll tell you a story about that. It's because when County Road Six was being rebuilt, what, 39 years ago?
188.
Was it 83? Yeah.
First time.
Yeah. They, Fifth, Sixth Street was the detour. And that's when all the signage went up, I think just to confuse a hell of a lot of people.
It was to slow people down, because they were driving too fast on Sixth Street.
I know, I know, I know, I know. It, it, the use of yield signs, where people don't expect to see yield signs, it's really confusing.
Yes, most people go right through them.
Yes, I think, and, you know, they're designed to, but you don't have enough visibility. Yield signs are usually used where you've got so much visibility, it doesn't matter. You know, you can just go, there you don't have, I would like to see the streets like Cedar and Oak, all the streets, Market. Those streets coming onto Sixth Street, all be stop signs. So those streets have to stop.
So the streets going east and west will have the stop signs.
But I would also like to see one four-way stop, probably on Oak, so that nobody can use it. That it isn't used as a thoroughfare, as the.
We'll try it, Oak is the one.
Would be a three-way stop.
Up by, by the creek.
Yeah.
Three-way stop, if you can do it, stop.
Is that, my rights to being elders to Cedar?
Cedar.
No.
No, it's, it's Oak.
Well, that's Oak, I'm saying Cedar should be the, should be the.
Yes. Oak, Cedar, all of them.
I even had suggestions that stop this road going out to Six. People says, can't we just close that? That would slow people down.
For which one? Oh, that connects to Six?
Yeah.
Yeah, mine is.
I don't think that's a really viable alternative. We've got.
Well, we do need it for any detour, I was gonna have.
As a second way out. Because, yeah, because Fifth Street's gonna be closed for a while.
Yeah.
Both of them are closed.
Well, yeah, Sixth Street won't get you anywhere, but eventually, you know, if there's a, if there's an accident on Six, you know, at the end of town, you know, it does come in handy for a lot of stuff. We are, we're bottled up, that would be my proposal.
I think there, was there a stop sign there?
No, there was no stop sign.
There's no stop signs.
That's something's a justice.
At one time, the county wouldn't let us, if you put yield signs on County Six, and we took the stop signs for a moment. It was during a recession.
Did we need to have a public, would we need to have a public vote on that? No?
No.
But from what you.
I have, I had nobody object to switching to stop signs.
Yeah, I would be in favor of it. I would be two-way, two-way stop on.
You need a, you need a stop sign on Market, it's all in North Six.
One, one on Market, because.
So should we put a speed sign or two on there then?
Randy signed the speed, speed sign, they don't, they don't do it, they're always coming.
Yeah, but it gives law enforcement something to, he can enforce it then.
Yeah.
If we put it, put it down to 25.
Yeah, I'd say if we, if we put a, if we put a speed limit signs, put about 25.
There's a, there's a child on Sixth Street who lives in my home, mine, who's legally blind and has a visual impairment. So is there, is there a way, would we want that kind of a sign there?
I think there already are.
And slow children playing signs, I mean, I'm just saying, you could have a blind.
Oh, I think, I think, I think there are signs for that.
Yeah.
Basically, if it's based on vector, here's how you can figure out, you're gonna put a four-way stop on Oak and Six, you're talking 10 stop signs.
Yeah.
So you're gonna make them all four-way stops?
No, just, just on.
It'd be one, one, four, two, two.
Because.
Two, four, five.
Yeah, because Market Street only had, doesn't go through, and then.
So it would only be. Yeah, you need one, that's up to Cedar, you need two, right, and then Market, or, well, that street would need two.
Oh, and then the one on the end.
Locust, I guess maybe one left, you wouldn't be, don't even want a Locust.
Yeah.
Locust is the one that goes right up by.
The church.
Oh, okay, is that a yield sign or is that a stop sign? Where's, not Remar, the gentleman who we just paved.
There's a sign there.
I know, I love that.
They're all yield, that's what I think.
Yeah, right now, there's two yield signs.
Correct.
On Sixth. On Sixth.
Right, right, and those would go away without stop signs.
Oh, it's, it's four, for each direction.
Okay, yeah.
Good, it is confusing, because even when I come out of the alley and go up this way for some reason, not, not Walmart, people are becoming, and I had it right away, but they don't realize it.
Yes, you don't dare take it, because, yeah, nobody expects it.
It's, it's, that's backwards, I think, too.
Do we need a resolution? What do we need to do to make this, the motion, would sign this as a stop sign?
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second it.
Motion made, I'll second it, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Both, making care.
We do have kids at play signs, too.
Yeah.
There is some down there.
Yeah.
But I think we should put at least a couple, 25 mile on their speed.
Well, then we have to change the speed limit.
Well, there is one down, it's signed by, across the street from Chavis.
Bruce is making those up, but that's, yeah, we could put them all up there, it doesn't.
Do we need to change?
I would, I mean, Eric will enforce it, everything will force.
Okay.
I don't think anybody from the law will be 25.
Probably not.
If they're gonna be taking somebody that's gonna be driving 35.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And most of my suspicion are locals.
So you're going through the yield signs and.
Yeah, they're trying to get through the yielding sessions before they get hit by the.
Not realizing there's a yield sign there.
And then I do have another request for stop signs, up on Ridge Road and South Street, where Ridge Road comes up, well, where Ridge Road goes down, there's no stop sign. There's a stop sign on South Street where it meets Ridge Road. But, and there's a lot of traffic there, coming up Ridge Road from the bottom, the hill. You can't stop at the top because of, it's, it's a hill, I mean, you can't stop in there. So people just constantly go through that stop sign thinking, well, there's no, everybody's going to turn. But it isn't necessarily, so, one of the residents up there requested that we put a lighted stop sign up. But I believe also there is no stop sign on Ridge headed north, right?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Then we should probably do that.
One on each.
Well, it's one.
Some of those are.
One there, yeah.
Yeah. And put.
So there is one coming up the hill?
No, no.
Okay, and there wouldn't be, but it would be the others.
There would be one on the north-southeast corner.
That's probably a good idea, because with Ninety Three closed, the traffic up that way will increase, won't it? With people cutting through.
It might not be going that way, they'll be going that way.
Okay.
For a while, they'll be going that way, but yeah, eventually, it's, it's gone for a while. But, the lighted stop sign, I don't even know what this cost. You wanna find out, Tim? None will.
I don't know if I'd go exactly flashing, because that would drive people crazy.
Just add a stop sign.
You can get the one, just light up.
But if you see the light, you're gonna get, I mean, you're gonna get, drive it to the corner of the highway, sort of like, all night.
So maybe just a regular stop sign.
On the other one.
Yeah.
Sounds like they're on the LST or something.
All right.
Okay, awesome. Give the people what they want.
All right. So now, financial?
I'm looking for bills, I didn't see anything unusual.
Yeah, I can see them in the month, or, well, hopefully, by the, by the night, it'll be back on the, on the right side of what's going on here, but we'll hold these checks for a while, because we got a 482,000 dollar photo to bank under resolution, and this will take over, that's four, 484, 32.
So we'll sign the checks, we'll send them.
You're gonna have to go with.
Yeah, we'll send them out the first part of November.
Well, it's, it depends on what comes in, I mean, there will be some that are released, but.
Yeah. All right, I'm making a motion to pay those bills.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made, carry, old business. New business?
You can decide to do it with your license, it's in our.
Yeah, I'm just waiting on liability insurance from Bolt, so we'll be back next month.
What's a liquor license cost?
For on-sale, off-sale, on Sunday, it was 2,300, and then off-sale was just $100, I think.
Oh, really?
Charlie just paid 2,300, I think.
Okay. Revised meeting schedule? Are there any revisions? Then, I'm gonna do it.